To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and the vehicle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Debbie, go ahead and call the roll.
Trusty Guyer.
Here.
Trusty Spurling.
Here.
Trusty Baumann.
Here.
Trusty Youngerman.
Here.
Trusty Marisak.
Here.
Trusty Betzinger.
All right, we do have a call in this evening. Moving into our public participation, the first one tonight is a recognition of Ed Paff's Illinois Outdoor Hall of Fame induction. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. I'd like to ask Ed to come down, please. So tonight, we wanted to recognize Ed Paff for his upcoming induction into the Illinois Conservation Hall of Fame. Ed came to the Village of Montgomery and began working in the Public Works Department in 2006. Ed is currently the forestry supervisor and is dedicated to maintaining the urban canopy, native basins, conservation, education, preservation of native species indicative of our region, and so much more. His vision has impacted our community significantly by enhancing the quality of life for residents, improving our ecosystem, and ensuring a better tomorrow for future generations. His passion for conservation expands beyond his time in the Village of Montgomery, serving the residents. Ed can be found in his off-hours, farming on his property, helping at Red Bud Creek Farm, landscaping for elderly friends, or walking many nature areas within the state of Illinois. I personally couldn't think of anyone more fitting for this honor, and tonight I'm proud to recognize Ed for his achievement and look forward to the many contributions that Ed will bring to the community. I also want to thank Communication Manager Christina for her work in nominating Ed for this award, for this recognition tonight. So I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Ed on his induction.
I'd just like to thank everybody. The nomination was phenomenal. I read a lot of the information that was turned in, and it was very nice. The other thing I want to point out, though, is it's like, the reason I have the part of the passion and why I came to work for the village is because you have the native basins, we have the river. It's really a beautiful town, and the village has invested a lot of time and money creating these areas. And I just want to make sure that our residents realize, like, the value of what it is that they have. It's really a special thing. And that's thanks to all the trustees and past, you know, planners and public works directors and everybody that's been here over the past, you know, 20 years or so, and longer probably. And it really is a nice thing. So I want to thank everybody for their support in the in the nature part of the community also. So.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I have a Bachelor of Science in Horticulture and 30 years of experience, and I'm pretty sure Ed has forgotten more knowledge than I will ever know.
All right, so let me read this real quick. Ed Paff, Illinois Conservation Foundation, 2024 Outdoor Hall of Fame, recognition of your significant contributions and unparalleled dedication serving, promoting cancer, and supporting natural resources and outdoor recreation.
Also would like to thank the Public Works team members that came tonight, too, to show support for Ed. Certainly appreciate it. I know you guys worked a long day today and need to get home to your families. So whenever it's appropriate, if you leave, we will not be offended. All right. Moving on to the next item. Item B for public participation is officers' recognition. Chief?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I get to do one of those happy dance things. So I'm going to ask three individuals to come down. Greg Mayhew, Bill Novak, and Tony Hall. If those three can come down here. So most of you know, back on January 12th of 2021, we had a tragic incident in Montgomery. It was a shooting on a bridge. Police were called for an incident, and when we arrived, we found an individual there with several gunshot wounds. We had some sketchy descriptions, direction of travel. Officers got there. The case was originally signed to Detective Novak, and it began. You know that a homicide is a lengthy tedious investigation. It's been two years. These officers that stand in front of you are dedicated. They put every small lead, loop, tracking, interview, piece of evidence, presented to the State's Attorney more than once, and finally, in September of this year, they finally preferred charges for murder. On October 4th, with the help of the United States Marshals, the individual is arrested, and he is in custody today. So therefore, I would like the mayor to come up here and present these awards with me. I'm going to read one, and it will insert each other's names. In recognition for exceptional meritorious service to the citizens of the Montgomery, Illinois, while serving as a detective in the Investigation Division of Montgomery Police Department during the period, January 12th, 2021, to October 4th, 2023, your superior professionalism, leadership, technical expertise demonstrated by these investigators in the approach in the investigation of a homicide. You continuously lead, perform, and give Montgomery police work to the highest caliber. These detectives exemplify performance of duty and outstanding service and are keeping the highest standards of the Montgomery Police Department. You're all a credit to yourself, the Montgomery Police Department, and the citizens of Montgomery. I thank you. The Montgomery Police Department thanks you, and the citizens thank you. Outstanding job.
Apparently, you need to have a shaved head to be a detective.
Thank you all. All right, well, go ahead and we're going to skip over to the item C this evening. We'll do that at another evening. Item D is introduction of Mason Kellogg, Maintenance Worker, Forestry Division. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. I'd like to ask Mason to come down. So fortunately, we are able to go back to what we used to do and bring new employees in front of the board to be introduced. So tonight I have the pleasure of introducing Mason Kellogg. Mason came to the Village Montgomery Public Works Department right after Montgomery Fest in August, so he got to see the aftermath of that. But he is being trained by our recognized person tonight, so can't think of anybody better to be mentoring Mason throughout his process. So Mason comes to us from the Fox Valley Park District, where he worked and has background in obviously all the areas that Public Works covers. So we look forward to all the contributions that Mason will bring in the future. So I'd like to introduce Mason Kellogg.
Oh, yeah. We do. All right. The last item. Item F is a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Trusty Spurling, would you do the honor?
I would, absolutely. Whereas breast cancer is the most common type of cancer among women in the world and second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States, more than one in eight women and one in 833 men in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetimes. In 2023, an estimated 300,590 Americans will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer. And whereas metastatic breast cancer occurs when breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including the bones, lungs, liver, and brain, resulting in an average life expectancy of 26 months. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month seeks to increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection and treatment of breast cancer, and whereas many women still do not utilize mammography at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method of detection. And whereas taking advantage of early detection methods such as mammography and clinical breast exams could help the breast cancer death rate drop by approximately 30%. And whereas the American Cancer Society and other organizations continue to search endlessly for a cure through vital research and to reduce the risks of breast cancer through community education. Now therefore, Matthew T. Brawley, Village President of the Village of Montgomery, hereby proclaims the month of October 2023 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Village of Montgomery, and urges all women and their families to get the facts about breast cancer, supports those courageously fighting breast cancer, and honors the lives lost to this devastating disease. Once again, I appreciate the support, and I will make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the to the next item on there. Item G, which is not shown, is a public comment period. Any member of the public is, this is your opportunity to address the board on any topic. Is there anybody in the room or online that wishes to address the board? Did anybody submit anything?
They did not.
All right, perfect. Okay, move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the September 25th Village Board Meeting, executive session minutes for September 25th, accounts payable through October 9th, 2023, accounts receivable for September of '23, the building report for September of '23, water production report for September of '23, and the appointment of Matthew B. to the Historic Preservation Commission. So move.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. All right, items for separate action tonight. We have, the first one is ordinance 2043, authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed $5.5 million in general obligation alternate revenue source bonds. And I will avoid from reading the rest of that. This is waiver first, passage on second. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, President Brawley. So as we continue our discussions on the issuance of the 2023 bonds for our water improvement, for infrastructure related to our non-revenue water program and our Lake Michigan application, we once again have Anthony Maselli here from Spear Financial, who can tell us more about the bonds and what we are approving tonight in this parameters ordinance.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Good evening, President Brawley, Village trustees. Tonight for your consideration is a bond ordinance which will authorize not to exceed $5.5 million of general obligation alternate revenue source bonds. This is being done a little differently than we have in years past with bond issues, namely because today is a banking holiday. We would have sold today but for that fact. So what we plan on doing is having this this ordinance approved tonight, which will set forth the parameters for which the bonds can be sold. And then we actually have a sale, a competitive bond sale scheduled for tomorrow. So we'll take bids tomorrow, finalize finalize the bids, accept the winning bidder, lock in the sizing, and then it'll be, so long as the bonds fit within the parameters as set forth in the ordinance, President Brawley and Village Manager Zolfo will be able to authorize a sale at that time. And then we'll move on to closing the bonds October 25th. That is the current timing. The the parameters ordinance does allow us to enter into a sale contract anytime between passage and all the way out until April 9th of next year. But again, the current intent is to sell tomorrow. So the the bonds are scheduled to sell. I did put together a memo that I believe you should have in your packet that just describes a lot of the steps that we've taken thus far on the bond issue, what our expectations are for for the sale tomorrow, and then also information on the bond rating. So as part of this process, we did have to go to Standard Reports to receive bond rating for the bonds. The village's rating was affirmed at double A stable outlook, which is great news. The the report, which I which I did include as an attachment to my memo, gives great information about the credit of the village. And, you know, given all of the the things that need to be done for the for the water project going forward, being able to keep that rating is is a is a good achievement. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding bond sale, what our expectations are for tomorrow, or anything related to the memo I had laid out.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, if there's no questions of staff, is there a motion? So move.
Second. Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Five zero. Thank you. Item B is ordinance 2044, amending sections 1-10 and 11-53 of the village code pertaining to parking, restricted parking by permit. This is waiver first and passage on the second reading. Director Abt?
Thank you, President Brawley. The attached ordinance is going to amend the village code. As it says, it's going to codify a process for the issuance and enforcement of restricted parking permits. This is going to be issued for any reasonable accommodation when qualifying disability is established. So this will just codify a process for us to be able to issue said permits and for police to be able to enforce the parking restrictions.
Excellent. Questions?
I do. I thought previously we had discussed having a six-month requirement in here, that they have to reapply every six months to align with the the red placard for the disability with a stay of Illinois.
So as part of the accommodation application process, that is something we have we have put into the approval of the accommodation, that we reevaluated on a six-month process, on a six-month basis. So.
Okay, and we don't need that in the ordinance, then?
No, this is just establishing the permit parking. That's kind of more of a policy decision as part of the application process for accommodations. So we're kind of taking that on a case-by-case basis. But having that the board told us, we'd like to look at this at six-month increments.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Motion to approve. There you go.
Second.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes. That carries five to zero. Thank you. Item C is a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2023-008, a special use for multi-unit dwellings and variances, Antonio Castellan at 160 Sherman Avenue. Director Abt?
Yes, thank you. The petitioner is before you. This is regarding an existing use that is at 160 Sherman. Back in the spring, the petitioner modified one of the existing legal non-conforming multi-unit dwelling structures on the property and thus expanded the non-conformity. This means that it is no longer legal non-conformity conforming and has to come into conformance of the process or be returned back to its original size. So this work was performed without a permit, so we can't issue any permits without going through this process retroactively. The modifications included redoing the roof on the second structure, which is the garage structure, fixing some damage that had happened in a storm. So in doing that, he removed the roof, redid the rafters, and created sort of a single-shed roof dormer across the top of the garage. So in order to bring it into conformance, he does need to get a special use because this is zone R1 in order to have multifamily use on the property. This was existing use when he purchased the property of having six units on the site. So he's looking to bring that into conformance. It's three units in the main building, which was formerly a single-family home, and then three units in the garage building. So those are the two structures on the site that have the multifamily on it. So the ordinance before you would approve the special use specifically for those two structures with the three units. Any expansion or changes to those would require an amendment to the special use in order to happen. So if he were to try to increase the size of either the structures or add additional dwelling units, that would have to come through the process again. Additionally, we do have design requirements for multifamily, since he technically did sort of an addition onto the garage, although it didn't increase the number of units. Technically, those apply. So he's looking for variances for that garage structure from some of our design requirements related to roof articulation, facade articulation, window transparency, and those kind of things. So the variances before you, along with a special use, approve all of that. Incidentally, as we were working through it, we did discover that there is a requirement for enclosed parking spaces for multifamily. He only has three garage spaces on the site, and the requirement would be, I believe, for four. So he is going to have to come back for a variance for that. But since it was our oversight, staff will be taking care of that process. Just needs to apply. And so we're giving him a six-month window to get that application in and get that variance before the public hearing and before the board. So Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing last week. We did have one resident express some concerns about the multifamily use on the property and the number of units on there, expressing concerns about how that might impact their property values and traffic in the neighborhood. But ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the special use and the variances with the conditions that were recommended by staff. And all of those conditions are in the ordinance that's before you tonight for first reading.
Can you go back? You said something very early on. So when the property was purchased, there were already six units on there, or there were three?
There were six units total.
Okay.
Three in the garage and three in the single-family.
Okay, thank you.
Structure.
And I maybe, um, so when he purchased the property, there were three units, or there were six units?
Mm-hmm.
And so he he went through and did modifications to those existing six units?
He did modifications just to the garage structure. There was some store damage to the roof. And so when they got in there to see what needed to be done, there was some structural issues that needed to be addressed, so they kind of needed to redo the whole roof. Instead of coming to the village and saying, I have this I have to do, and finding out kind of what the ramifications for doing what they were proposing to do, he just did them because he felt it was kind of an emergency situation. Unfortunately, it did constitute expanding a non-conforming structure. And so we have to go through this process in order to make everything.
So the nonconformance was already in place before he purchased the?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And we're now going to come into compliance?
This will bring the property into compliance as it sits.
The permitting that wasn't issued, are we doing those permitting on the backside now?
Yes. So he's submitted his applications for those, but we just can't approve them until the special use and variants are approved. So we will be able to retroactively approve those permits and get that squared away once the the special use and variances are approved.
And there's no pushback on the items that need to be brought up to snuff?
No, he's been he's been made aware, and he's working on conformance with some of the violations. And then he'll be working with the fire department on the other issues.
Thank you.
And I do have a question. So he's paying the full permits, and since he did not get the permit to begin with, and for lack of a better term, he got caught, you're not going to waive any penalties or or anything? He's going to pay all the penalties associated with not getting the permit?
Correct. According to our ordinance, I believe permit fees are doubled for work without a permit. So he'll be required to pay double the permit fee.
Okay, good.
Okay.
What about for the construction company that actually did the work?
He is the construction company, I believe, that did the work, so.
All right. So hypothetically, in this situation, we have a construction company that's going to do work like this, where the residents did not hold permits. Are there any ramifications, any fees, penalties that are enacted upon that construction company in the village?
If they hadn't already been registered with the village, the registration fee would have been doubled as well, in addition to the building permit fees. Obviously, they are reprimanded for doing the work without a permit, but it would be a first offense. So it's not like we would not license them to do the work.
Double the cost.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to accept the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, item C.
Second. Go ahead.
Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
This is only accepting the fact that the plan made a recommendation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay. That carries five zero to accept the recommendation. The enacting ordinance 2024 is first reading. We'll have that on at a future meeting. All right. Item E tonight is a PSA with EEI in the amount of 900, I'm sorry, $99,950 for water and sewer revenue study. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. Given the significant water system improvements required to connect to the Lake Michigan water source through DuPage Water Commission, the revenues need to be examined to confirm that they will be adequate to meet the anticipated operational maintenance replacement and capital costs coming forth. This study will review the existing capital improvement and maintenance plans, identifying major deficiencies, and produce a written report recommending any necessary adjustments to the village's water and sewer rate and fee structure for this future water source. So tonight, there is a PSA presented to the board for $99,995. It is a budgeted item, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
$99,950, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
I do have a question. The with the scope of work, why are we not doing this in-house? Why isn't the Water and Sewer Superintendent with the Finance Department compiling this data and giving us this report?
So if you look back at some of the past PSAs, there is other data that EEI is working on as part of the process of identifying WIFIA funds as well as replacement projects. And so it only seemed appropriate that since most of that data and analysis is already being performed, there is a lot of transparency between these. So it's just the fluidity of working with EEI instead of trying to pull that data out and present it to, along with EEI assisting with that. To some degree, we felt it was better to move forward with this PSA tonight.
Okay, it's not something that we could do part of to to help reduce the cost? I know against a whole project, it's a drop in the bucket, but. I know against a whole project, it's a drop in the bucket, but I'm just looking at, you know, saving some funds. I mean, we're putting out a lot of money here recently, and anything that we can do in-house to help reduce some of the cost. Just something to look at in the future, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, we don't disagree. I think the major key point here, too, is that identifying the rate structure for the future, considering the size of this project, we feel is very important to get right out of the box as well. So, something that we really don't want to kind of come up short on. So, that's another reason, I think, why staff is recommending moving forward with EEI.
Okay, and we had, we performed a rate structure previous before we went this route, and this is just an update with, with, you know, current?
There's a lot of new information that's come forth since we began this process. So, yeah, keeping, making sure that we're keeping up to par with being able to satisfy all of the debt that's going to be coming forth from all the projects, and the source water changes very important.
Look forward to seeing the reduction.
Yeah.
What's the anticipated timeline?
I'm sorry?
Anticipated timeline?
Um.
Second to last page.
Pete, do you remember what the?
Yeah, there's a schedule.
May of twenty-four.
Sorry, I don't have the schedule in front of me.
Yeah, finalized presentation.
May twenty, twenty-four.
Yeah, May of twenty-four.
Trying to get it done, I'm going to leave the fiscal year, start of the fiscal year.
Okay. He said, trying to get it done close to the end of the, and start of the fiscal year?
Some of the work will be provided, you know, earlier so that it can be budgeted, but the report would still be done before the fiscal year starts.
All right. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Debbie.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. Item F is Resolution 2023-029, granting an easement for Burlington Short Line Railroad to install updated signal crossing equipment at the Route 31 railroad crossing north of Alcott Road. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So, through the process of updating the signal equipment that Burlington Short Line Railroad operates and maintains at the railroad crossing on Route 31 just south of Alcott, they were forced, or through the process, I should say, were required to coordinate with IDOT. At that time, during the update process, IDOT requested that they remove the signal equipment from IDOT Right-Away, which is requiring them to push the station to the west, putting it on village property, therefore needing the easement that's being presented tonight. Staff did review and go through the process of the easement to make sure that we had all the languages in there that we needed for future maintenance costs, as well as any relocation of the signal equipment to be one hundred percent on the Burlington Short Line Railroad and not the obligation of the Village of Montgomery. So, therefore, we are confident tonight to present this easement in front of the board, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thanks.
This is the same rail line that wouldn't give us easement across the tracks?
This is not. So, it's a different source because, so the rail is actually owned by BNSF, who is the one that objected and said no. But per the lease agreement that Burlington Short Line has with BNSF, the deferred maintenance goes to them. So, therefore, I guess ultimately, yes, but in reality, no.
And so, this is a permanent easement we're going to give them?
Correct.
In perpetuity, so it's going to be positioned as such that if we need to utilize that piece of property for anything, it's not going to interfere? I'm assuming it's going to be as close?
Yep, we did our best replacement. I mean, keep in mind that that property is very tight to begin with, but we did want to make sure, and so we worked with engineering enterprises to make sure that it's not going to propose any conflicts to intersection improvements. So, that was the major thing that we took into consideration there, since that parcel's really not conducive to any type of development.
As I didn't see it in here, but is it, is there language in here, or is it just presumed that if at any point in time that that is in our way, that we can request them to, to move it, or is that their easement forever?
We didn't put any language in there, to my knowledge, that I recall off the top of my head regarding them to relocate it. Obviously, if there's intersection plans, then we would go back to them and talk about relocation, but there's nothing specific to be documented in here to defer those costs at a hundred percent onto the railroad. But again, when we reviewed it, we took those into consideration when we looked at the placement of where the signal house is going to be located. There's really not much we can do as far as the signal equipment, the actual cross-arm box that are going to be installed. I mean, those have to be, you know, relative to the railroad tracks, but the house itself was what we took into consideration, where it's going to house the, the signal equipment.
Thank you. So, the, the easement that we're granting is literally right at the intersection. There's a temporary construction easement, but outside of that is the signal house easement that we're granting. So, it's, other than some IDOT or village roadway improvements, it's useless to us.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. All right, and we're confident that we don't need more right-of-way in that area to push that further off?
Don't believe so.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Need a motion?
I do.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Go ahead, Debbie.
Marisack?
Okay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. Okay. Item G is award a contract to Innovation Landscape, Inc. in the amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand, nine oh three and twelve cents for the Montgomery Park Improvements Phase One base bid with Alternatives A and B. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So, you may recall, on September 12th, board meeting, the staff brought in front of the village board a final design from Signature Design Groups for the Montgomery Park Improvements. So, at the, after those were approved and staff moved forward, we developed an RFP to go out to bid for these improvements. The original RFP consisted of all of the elements of improvement within the park, and we only were received one bid that came back from that initial RFP. So, at the May 22nd meeting, staff brought forth a recommendation to reject that bid and come up with a new strategy for bidding for the, the Montgomery Park Improvements. So, therefore, we designed and came up with a three-phased approach. So, Phase One, which is what is being presented here tonight, consists of excavation concrete, shade sale installation, masonry walls, and final grading and seeding. And then the alternate A is consisting of the brick paver installation under that shade sale component, and alternate B consists of the WPA Plaza improvements. So, while we did see more favorable bids through this process of splitting things up, it still comes obviously at a pretty good penny. So, we are looking at the possibility, or I'm sorry, we're looking, we looked at, excuse me, the application that we submitted for multiple grants that'll be used for this process. So, one thing I wanted to point out with alternate B was in the process and the submittal that we have in the grant application, we allocated sixty-two thousand dollars for the WPA improvement. So, when staff went back and looked at this, it only seemed fitting that we move forward with that alternate as well, since those funds will be reimbursed to the village at a hundred percent. If we choose not to go that route, that would require us to do a resubmittal of the grant application, which is a very lengthy process, as well as a very lengthy review process, which still has not been completed at this time. So, therefore, that's the recommendation that staff is making at this time. So, if there's any questions regarding this item, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks.
So, this work will be done prior to Montgomery Fest for 2024?
Yep, that's the plan. This will, we're hoping to kick off construction here still in the fall, get the majority of the work done. We're hoping, hopefully, all of the work done in the fall. We do have allotted in the time, the scope for some of it to spill over into the spring, and then we'll be looking at implementing RFP for Phase Three sometime in December and putting that out to bid, since that'll be all spring work.
With this, with any sort of restoration that needs to occur with the stuff that we're about to award, that will all be completed. It will be grass or whatever it's supposed to be. By the time Montgomery Fest happens, people aren't going to be tripping over blanket, correct?
Correct.
Once we get into Phase Three, and there's any restoration associated with that, any blanket that occurs with that is already going to, the blanket's going to be gone. It's going to be nice grass by the time Montgomery Fest occurs in 2024, correct?
That is the goal.
No, that's not the goal. That is the goal, but that needs to happen.
That is the goal. We can't control Mother Nature, but we will definitely push the contractor to meet that goal.
I'm a landscape construction contractor. You, we, if there, if we're doing the work in the spring, that's the best time to seed in blanket. If we're doing Phase Three in the spring, that's the best time to seed in blanket. I don't want to see blanket all over Montgomery Park because people are going to trip on it.
Agreed.
So, that's, that, that's a great goal, but there are other projects through the village that we've had goals to get completed, and they haven't happened.
Understood. We'll make it a priority on this project.
You got this. When the, the project was delayed, I think the monument truce was still producing the monuments and holding them in storage. Have they been completed to this point, and has anybody seen the, the monuments yet?
I've been told that they were completed. I have not seen any pictures, or have I gone out to their location, which I think is near Naperville?
Roosevelt Road?
It's near Chicago, right?
Hillside.
Yeah. So, no, we haven't yet. We haven't paid for the monuments. The second installment won't be made until, obviously, the monuments are set, which is scheduled for spring. Even if all of the concrete foundations are done in the fall, they felt it was the best interest to wait until springtime to come out and do the, the setting of those monuments. So, but no, that's something that we can definitely look into and get verification that the monuments are done and that, obviously, all the artwork is consistent with what we proposed.
Awesome.
We have purchased every long, there are no additional long lead-time items that we have to worry about?
Correct. So, as Trustee Bowman pointed out, the, the monuments themselves were one major long lead, lead time item. The other was the shade sale structure and fabrics, which those have been delivered. Those are at Public Works now. So, other than that, there are no other outstanding long lead-time items. The major thing is going to be the brick, which can be sourced directly at Unilock, which is a standard brick item, nothing special. So, so, yeah, we're confident that we've cured any long lead-time issues.
So, no foreseeable seed blanket back orders in the spring?
No.
Seth, you better not be.
And I get it. And, you know, the post-COVID ebb and flow of supply and, and all that has been an issue. And I, so your point is definitely well-taken. I think on this one, we, you will make that happen. We'll be good. We'll get grass to grow before the fest.
Yes, I do have a question further to Trustee Youngerman's concern. I'm looking at the bid schedule, and I am number 23, so it's final grading and temporarily seed in blanket. What do they mean by temporarily?
So, temporary seed, the final seeding will come on Phase Three, which is the landscaping. So, after all of the planted materials are put in, then there'll be the final seeding. That'll be done initially in the spring, so.
Okay, I don't see that broken. How does that hide them?
Four, it'll be in Fa, it'll be in Phase Three, so which isn't being proposed tonight. Phase Three will go out for bid in December.
Got you, okay.
Do, do we have a, once, now that we're in doing Phase Two and we're getting ready to do Phase Three, do we have a schedule of when these things are going to happen?
So, again, the schedule for Phase One and Phase Two are going to coincide because they have to work together for the excavation, install conduit for the lighting. So, that'll all encompass in Phase One and Phase Two will happen this fall, and then Phase Three will have a completion date once we craft the RFP. That'll be far enough in advance that all of that landscaping will be in place, and establishment of turf will be in place before August of next year.
October 9th, 2023 at 7:47 PM. Okay.
All right. Is that a motion, Steve?
Yes, I move to approve.
You do?
Second. Perfect. Go ahead.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries five zero. The next item is the lighting component, the Phase Two. Mark?
Thank you, President Brawley. So, as I had previously mentioned, we did separate out the bids. Unfortunately, we only received one bidder in the process of Phase Two. Fortunately, though, for the village, Frank Marshall Electric has done work for the village in the past and been more than satisfied with the work that they've completed. As I stated also before, this work will coincide with Phase One, so they'll be working with the contractors. So, we'll be setting up a pre-construction meeting to have both the contractors in at the same time, so they can coordinate work together to perform the installation of the lighting improvements that are going to be part of the Montgomery Park. Frank Marshall has also been working with us to make sure that the shade shale, shade, shade sale components have the necessary equipment for the uplighting and downlighting that's going to take place as part of that component of the project. So, if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them on this topic.
Cool.
So moved?
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thanks, Mark. We don't have anything for discussion this evening, and the last item, new or unfinished?
I got something. Go ahead. Halloween judging is October 25th this year. We have one more meeting before that. I'll remind everybody that that's the Monday of, of the week that we're doing the judging, so I just want to give everybody a heads up. Steve wants to bring us two little fans critics.
I'm sure Morgan's going to want to bring her little posse with her, so she always does.
I know Doug usually shows up, too, so appreciate any help we can get.
Going on the calendar now.
You said the 25th?
The 25th, yes.
And we start down in the community?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I've got one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Or, do you have one, Teresa? Okay. Let's talk about Thirty and Orchard. As I understand, it was supposed to be done last fall. We're trying to get a schedule from either the King County Resident Engineer or from the contractor. As I know engineers, if they have anything, they have schedules. Why can't we get it, why can't we get a final schedule from the contractor to get this completed? It can't continue to be an open-ended project. It keeps lagging on and on, and it's affecting the residents. What do we need to do to get a schedule to finish Thirty and Orchard?
So, staff has worked. I've sent an email out to King County to the lead project person on that job. I've also inquired with the resident engineer from Civil Tech who was running the project. They gave me some general timelines, but nothing specific. They're still waiting on the permanent traffic controller for that intersection. They have been working out there, pulling wire. The mast arms were erected. There has not been much work going on the past few days, so I'm not sure what's stalled out. I haven't gotten any updates from the county. Again, considering that's not a village project, my hands are kind of tied a little bit on trying to force information out of either the engineer or the project manager for the county, but staff is continuing to push to try to get information so we can have a timeline on when that project is going to be wrapped up, for sure.
It's October of 2023. We're about to go into a winter again. I have serious concerns on whether or not this project's going to be completed.
I would echo those concerns.
It was supposed to be done this time last year.
Right.
So, the question is, was the traffic controller, I mean, did they expect it to be a year later than when they needed it?
Again, I can't, I can't answer that.
I know it's unanswerable, but, and there's no timeline for when that traffic I know it's unanswerable, but, and there's no timeline for when that traffic controller comes in?
So the, the process that they're going to take, or at least what I was informed on the last update that I received from the county, was they are going to install a second temporary controller to operate the permanent lights. So that way, when the process, when the permanent controller comes in, they can revert back to the temporary signals with the first temporary controller that runs those signals. So that way, there's no obstruction or delay in, in, or, sorry, no hiccups with traffic during that swapover, and then they'll take that temporary controller, number two, they put in, pull that out, put the permanent in, and then all of the temporary equipment would come down after the signals go live. That is what I've been told by the county. Now, considering that there's been delays, I don't want to speculate, but maybe there, there's a chance that the permanent controller is coming in, and that's why they're delaying the process, so they don't have to go through that temp. But again, without getting any information back from the county, I, I can't speak to that.
If, if we're not getting information back from the county, because they're not getting information back from the contractor, maybe that's one of the main issues with this contractor, and maybe that's why they're behind a year. We need a list of dates for when they're going to have lane closure set up, and it can't be during rush hour on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah, I mean, all of us get stuck driving through that thing. So I, I think we're all a hundred, everybody in this room is a hundred percent with you on that. Would you reach back out to them tomorrow? And then I'll be in Chicago at CMEP with the King County Chair and the, the number two guy at their KDOT, and I'll ask as well. But if we can get some, some sort of timeline. I share that same concern going into the winter.
I will tell you right now, it will not be completed before winter.
Well, also the controller out there now, I don't think is functioning properly again. I came through there the other day, and eastbound traffic, there was nobody in the left turn lane or westbound, going westbound, and they still got a turn arrow. So I don't think that that controller is working correctly. And there was just another accident there, and it obliterated the one vehicle. The other one ended up in a ditch in front of Tropical Smoothie, and I just don't know why they don't have a, maybe they do, maybe it's not long enough, but they don't have a built-in delay that when the light turns red, you know, there's a five or 10-second delay before anybody else's light turns green. Because a lot of people, you know, they know that, a lot of people just run those green lights and the green arrows. So maybe a delay would help.
Yeah, and I think that's, and this just could be me, but maybe an engineer could back me up on this, that in a, in a traffic jam-type situation, people are more likely to blow a fresh red light to get through an intersection kind of thing.
So if there's a five-second delay before the other ones got the green, then maybe that would help alleviate some of the, the accidents we have out there. Of course, it gets down to motorists, I mean.
By the time this work is completed, it will actually be time to widen the whole thing.
Hopefully.
Well, it's already time for that, but there.
Well, you know, it's, it's great conversation. It's a project that Mark has no control over. We have no control over. So it's, it's King County. So I think the, rather than sitting here and blowing smoke and taking it out on somebody who has no control over it, do we find the schedule for Kendall County Board Meeting?
Then bring deconstruction in here, and I'll talk to them about it.
We didn't hire them.
Yeah, so.
We can't be held hostage. I mean, we've been held hostage for a year.
Take it to the, to, to King County and not to Mark.
I'm, I'm talking to the person who's in communication with King County. If you want me to go to King County tomorrow, I will set up the meeting.
Yeah, and I think Matt's with you on this. Hey, the one thing, just for the group that's not in here right now, King County stuck their neck out and, because we asked them to, and funded intersection improvements to an intersection that they don't own because of the, because of IDOT's, you know, failure to provide any sort of improvements there. So this is not even an IDOT project, it an IDOT intersection. So they tried, they funded it, and we just need to close it out.
And I'm, I'm not saying it's a King County failure. I'm saying it's an absolute failure on the part of the general contractor. They do subpar work, their safety is shit, and they can't get things done on a schedule.
Okay, point taken. Anything else? Doug?
Halloween Safety Event is coming up at the, apologize, Halloween Safety Event is coming up at the police station on the 29th from 10:00 to 2:00. Always a fantastic event. Officers all volunteer their time and get donations from the community, so it's a great time to come out and see the kids and let them do some trick-or-treating with the police officers and learn a little bit about how to do it properly. So just put that out there for everybody, and thank you for River Run this weekend. It was excellent for my run, walk, trot, as I like to refer to it. But it was a great time, great event, sold out, really nice. And then on last week, Wednesday, we had the Cemetery Walk with Historic Preservation with about 200 participants. So it was really nice, had a couple of nice young high school actors from Oswego High School came over. And then as we found out during talking to them, as, I went with the last group, and so as we came through, we picked up each actor and they joined us, and we got to watch each other actor. And we got to the end, both of those young men are in the middle of rehearsing and practicing for their OHS play and took the time to rehearse and memorize and really did a fantastic job. They really did a nice job. So thank you to OHS for sending them.
Excellent. Okay. Future meetings, our committee, the whole meeting is canceled, and we will have the Village Board two weeks from tonight on October 23rd at 7:00 PM. With that, I would like to adjourn into executive session for two reasons, to discuss the employment of employee and to discuss the acquisition of real property.
So moved?
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer. Trustee Spurling. Trustee Bowman.
Yes. And we adjourn. Thank you.